The lady next to me was rather rude and you know had her arms up and so like I was kinda like this the whole show. But it was really, I've never been to a ballet before, it was, it was interesting um. And I, I, I told Andy, I said, I think this is my penance now. For anything that gets me in trouble with Danielle, this is like gonna get out of jail free, like remember when I went to the ballet with Danielle? I got a, I got a few, you know, a few in the bank there.
Yeah, so.
It was, it was good, it was, it was really good um. Um, it, it's, it's interesting when you watch something that doesn't have any words, it's a little hard to follow at first, like you have to get used to like. Seeing this, like looking at my program like, okay.
Yeah, that, that's really what's so bad about COVID, it was up at the Warden Theater and this and. And uh, there's another place up there, they used to always have those kind of things coming in and then I was uh. Yeah.
Well, she really wanted to see Transseverian Orchestra, but, cause she is a flute player. But it's also, she was.
She did.
Um, but it's always on a random day, like this year it's on Tuesday. It's like, um.
They think they're a big enough name that they can do anything.
Well, and I get that, I mean, and the tickets are like two hundred dollars a piece, but it's just like, I can't do it on Tuesday, if it was a weekend. Maybe, so that's, working on that.
Well, what he's gonna do is you can get her tickets and not go. You know, she can go by herself.
You're just trying to get me in the doghouse for us.
No, no, she, she wants her tickets, you buy her tickets.
Um, afternoon, I should be around.
You want after three?
Um, yeah, I, I, I'm leaving office at four, but yeah.
Okay, I'll try to call when you're ready.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, I'm over to you. I recommend it, but we. Yeah, I realize that. Yeah. It is, it is, but she, anyway, she was probably by, well, she's violating. She, yeah. Oh, you're in.
The budget looks uh.
Oh yeah, you remember the, the big, the big Korean spiders? I have a whole shelf, I'll be in budgets in my office of all those big binders.
Oh my gosh.
I got them back, yeah, I was just looking at one the other day, two thousand and eight.
Yeah.
I used one as a doorstep one day, it was, it was so, it was so bad. Yeah, so. No. Yeah. Yeah.
Where she is now.
I am. I am. Yeah, yeah.
What initiated how.
Yes.
It's uh, it's uh.
Yeah, you are tough. But.
Do also let it describe, I don't cheer out, but.
Yeah, you know, that, that is. So you're getting, go. Understand, a lot of things I saw. That's right. I can't work in my heart tradition. Exactly. So. That's it, it was time. But, but I was.
I don't like, and I'm. I am not. I'm so right of God, I'm sorry, I didn't think about that first, after that was I.
I, I called three meetings.
I didn't necessarily.
My day and.
Yours totally.
So. I was just looking. No.
In the fall or state two years ago, I rested, I really said it, but actually.
Hey, done. How are you? My own thoughts. I agree, but I don't think any people, it's actually been a good experience. But. But uh, what's that supposed to be? I've never, I've never been in here, so. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I have, I've been. Perfect fact. Oh, okay, yeah. One water tank is going down. Sometimes it's. Yeah. Yes. That was, all those concerns been buried, look like they've been getting around work, just we hear increasing too.
Just let me tell you, I would drown it better. Have the, the full of lights. Uh, trip on you and. Stop that. So, coming off the stretch. Uh, when they really do feel yeah, you know, like. But, oh, there's that one right there, oh.
All right, folks, we'll go ahead and get started since we do have everybody here in the six thirty P M. We can stand for the budget delegates. The flag of the United States. And to the public who expands, one nation under God, in this world, with a better. We're going to be going to pick the podcast, please. House Member Williams.
President.
Reed.
Here.
Dexon.
Here.
Lawler. Davis.
Here.
Brian.
Here.
And Mayor Snyder.
Here.
So, study session is to discuss the items that will be action, kind of regular council meeting. First item on the agenda will be uh, the resolution twenty twenty three thirty three. Um, for the drop plan. Chief Kip, are you gonna give us info or?
I can, or. Yeah, so this is um, is tied to the command staff um, union contract renewal. Um, and as part of the process, we discussed implementing one of these for the city. A drop program is a deferred retirement option plan. So this plan for those who need their twenty five years of service, they're eligible for to retire. This program allows us to retain the, those employees for a few more years. So we're able to retain the knowledge and skills and the experience. Um, with this, uh, a separate um, interest fund will be created. Um, so whenever that employee reaches that twenty five year of service, they're eligible to retire. They will notify us if they wish to enroll in the drop plan. They're only allowed to remain in the plan for an additional five years. So once they say for that five years, they must retire at that point. Um, so when they are enrolled in the drop program, that monthly payment that they would have received um, when collecting from the pension. That is then put into this interest bearing account. That amount is determined by a formula, um, that is all tied to the pension plan and actuarials and all of that, so. We will know what that amount will be for each employee, it is set aside into um, this interest bearing fund each month. They, it builds up, and then when they complete that five years, um, they retire from the city, then they withdraw the fund that has been set aside in the drop program. And then they forward with collecting their monthly pensions going forward. Um, so we just discussed this with the command staff, they kind of um. Requested that we implement one of these. We do think it will be a good idea, because it allows us to retain, like I said, that those knowledge and experience um, committed officers. Have we answered any questions? Chief Kip, Director Abbott, for this one thing, please.
There's, there's a five, there's a opt out of the five years, so we figure out this is not hurting for the city, this. If they're back in our funding, uh, or the pension fund going below a hundred and twenty percent, we have a way of making it, you know. So this is basically a trial period, we only have them obviously notable, until we'll see how it impacts the pension fund. And if it's favorable, then we'll continue on it, not.
Thank you for that, that was important to know. So yes, we do have that outlaw built into it, it kind of protects not only um, the city, but then the public safety pension as well. We have a very well funded pension plan, and obviously we don't want that to fall below um. And where we have to start contributing into that.
Yeah, that was my question when I read this, the number of employees that are eligible to participate in the drop plan, so you're saying only one?
Right, no, that's.
So, at this, at this time, it's one. When he was retired to um, have the actuary completed, actually very eligible for negative to see the impact of that one employee. Who would enroll into, into the plan, and based off of the information that we received back, it's a very minimal change, does not impact the fund whatsoever. I mean, it's our deputy chief Kern, who is eligible um, to retire, and he would be eligible to enroll into the, to the drop program.
Kern, how old are you?
Yeah.
I'm about five, five hundred year and a half.
It comes from Venus. Yes.
He is younger than me, about five years.
You know, um, so this year presently, um, one employee. What about the coming years, will you have a year when several people?
Within the next five years, over you, uh, we only have one employee that's eligible, not until after that five years, we got other individuals.
Okay.
We're gonna find that check about.
Okay, all right.
My most senior player, that was hired in two thousand thirteen, so after the twenty five years, I think it was twenty thirty eight, we figured out that this will go into effect for them. Um, I, I do think at some point, if, if we allow this with the command staff, that the officers would also be interested in having this in their contract at some point. Um, it can be beneficial, as like our last officer we hired is nineteen, he would be eligible to retire at forty four. So, keeping him for another five years could be very beneficial to the city as well, so. Um, I, I do think this would be beneficial in the long run to the city, there's very little cost to the city, the officers right now, including myself, all pay four percent into the pension. The city doesn't, doesn't cost the city anything, so as we've kind of looked at it, it's kind of our money, even though the city is responsible for it in the long run. Um, this is no different than if Jason retired today, he'd still be collecting this money, so it doesn't change how, you're not getting money early from pension or anything like that. Um, it just allows us to keep them for a little while, not them gaining extra money for return. Whatever, accumulate to get on.
But I can't think of else the, the term for what the, the accumulation of your pension years, your service years, about accumulating more.
Right, and, and, and you could stay on, I, I don't remember what the cap date is on, but you could stay on longer and accumulate more from the city. Um, this would give you actually a little more than it would if you had done that, um, but then depending on how long the person lives, over time, they'd be collecting more pension money, so it could actually draw on the pension more. If they were to stay, were this cap set at that point that they decide to do the drop program? We know.
And just having this out pause, since we do have um, a bit of time before the next round of the ways to would be eligible to enter it. Um, it allows us to protect ourselves, we don't know what the market could be within the next five years, but say if the market, say hit, then we have this option like, hey, let's put a pause on it. We're gonna withdraw this program at this time, so we do have that at, built in protection.
And do we have a sense as to how many other municipalities are participating in this type of thing?
Um, it's become quite common um, with other municipalities, when we talk with our Labor Attorney, they, they.
Yeah, that's right, if they're working with currently that happened, and then hiring that with uh, Coldwater City Manager, it's just. Well, some of them have kabbos where the employees have to still make payments into it, um, but because ours is so low, one of that hundred fifty percent upwards, um. We feel that is, this is, that's cannot happen with the tribute anymore, that is pretty well funded. That could be an option, if after the five year period, we decide that the employee still needs to put a certain percentage in there, then we can agree to that, but right now, I think it's okay.
Go ahead.
And I think they gave us comparison with Southfield.
Southfield is excellent.
Twenty, I know Monroe has it, the Michigan State Police have this program, um, so there are quite a few first parties that do have this program.
Okay, we have any other questions for either the City Managers, Senator, or Chief Kip? All right, thank you. All right, next will be um, our approval of the three year contract for our command officers. Attorney Parkus, were you gonna give us information on this?
Not necessarily. Another in close, let me, Chief, let's get down.
What was that, you know? All right, next will be our approval of resolution twenty three thirty, um, for the exemption for the health insurance contribution. City Manager, Senator.
Yeah, so this is just a yearly resolution that we um, passed to. By the age twenty, here at the city, we provide the ninety ten, we'll recover ninety percent of the health coverage, and the employee needs is just not before that ten percent, so. This is standard requirement.
Any questions for City Manager, Senator, on this side? All right, this will be uh, resolution twenty three thirty one, to approve our twenty four budget appropriations. So we have this nice big binder called information.
Yep.
And uh, have some items in the back end, so some, Senator, if there's anything more to.
Just one highlight, that we have a series of budget work sessions, we held a formal public hearing at the last, the last regular meeting, um, so we have the final. Twenty twenty four budget ready and available um, for your consideration. Just one highlight, um, just our estimated revenues for general budget are eight million, one hundred and sixty five thousand, five hundred and eighty three dollars. And estimated appropriation of eight million, three hundred and eighty five thousand, one hundred and seventy six. Um, for total budget, for next year, we're looking at estimated revenues of twenty five million, one hundred and eighty seven thousand, five hundred and eighty five. And estimated appropriation of twenty three million, five hundred and thirty eight thousand, five hundred and sixty five dollars. So I just want to say thank you to Finance Director Clark for all of his hard work that he gave us this year.
Do we have any questions, either City Manager, Senator, or Director Clark? Yep, Mayor Phil Jackson?
Yes, Director Clark, please. Um, so did the E D C, did that budget change in over two years in time, we need to box submit?
Uh, whatever budget, budget that Erge came up with, it's her numbers, I didn't change them. Um, but I did get it from her, and it's included in the book. So, but I think she did send us an email stating that her budget has not been approved yet, it's gonna be approved tomorrow. And so we were not aware of that, I don't think.
Yeah, so her budget, just declared the E D C budget, it was approved by the board, however, they did not approve the amendments for the twenty twenty three budget, I'm not sure. But, but they're done at the same time, it's all a part of the next year's budget. Um, so that was provided to the, for our public hearing, so those numbers, the updated numbers from Virgi were included for the public hearing at last regular meeting, however. The next resolution for the amendments for twenty twenty three, um, we would recommend approval with the exception of A D Cs, because they did not. The board has technically not approved those.
This will be a little bit.
Correct.
Any other questions for comments? Next will be the approval of resolution twenty three thirty two, for the fiscal year twenty three budget amendments. And we just.
Yes, um, so included this goes along with twenty twenty four budget, so during all of the budget work sessions, we got um, Director Clark was reviewing each of the funds. And he went over the estimated anticipated end of the year numbers, these are all of the amendments that are needed to give us new. Um, people up in numbers that he presented to the law. So as I just said, um, for some reason, the E D C board did not approve their twenty twenty three amendments, so they will be approved. At their meeting on Thursday, um, so I would recommend approval, because I'm looking with the exception of the fourth funds that fall out of the E D C. Those will come before you at the next.
Any questions, check that, it's on the side. All right, next will be asked to approve resolution twenty three thirty four, for the service agreements for Voya and Nekora. For the, and health savings. And then for Sarah.
Yes, I will give a brief overview, and then we, Director Abbott will give a little bit more detail during the regular meeting. Uh, but this is, uh, we're looking to change the administrator and beneficiary for our um, four fifty seven, and retirement health saving plan. Um, currently we work with Michigan Square, they handle both aspects, however, we are looking to transition to Voya and Nekora. Um, Nekora, they are the beneficiary for our public safety pension, as I stated, our public safety pension is looking very well, and our investments really will. We thought that this would be first to handle the rest of the employees of retirement, um, accounts. Um, as I said, Director Abbott will give a little bit more detail during the regular meeting. Um, this resolution just allows me to sign the um, agreement forms to get this process going, a lot of them will be coming electronic. So we thought that it would just be easier to have them sit to me to get this process going. If you have any questions for yourself or Director Abbott, please, just try to be mindful of.
Any questions? Or comments on this side? We're good. All right, uh, next will be asked to approve resolution twenty three thirty five. The drinking water stage are a lot.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, so if you, I'm hope that you were probably approved one of these at their last regular meeting. Um, so we received the nine point six million in grant funding from Eagle, the Drinking Water State Revolving Loan Fund. That was, so we published the notice of intent to borrow against that during our last meeting. This notice of intent is to um, to borrow against that second half of, of that, of the city is responsible for. So we are responsible for funding the nine point one million, um, for the nineteen point two million dollar project. We did, we did not even, yeah, last week, we discussed again, just the, um, we are able to secure funding through them. Um, that looks like that's an option, in that we will pursue the private market as well, we're talking with um, Baker Tilly and our Ron Coles, so obviously. Private market will have either something like the U S D A, but this notice of intent is just to let the community know that we will be selling bonds for a total of twelve million. For the nine point one, um, that we are responsible for covering for the nineteen point two million dollar water project.
Questions or comments for City Managers, better? What we discussing the city attorney contract?
Yeah.
And next, we ask to approve um, our city attorney's new contract.
So this is um, um. Following um, our review this year, um, getting our favorable review, we're requesting a slight increase in our. In our contract, um, as previously indicated, our office did not take a raise last year. Um, we're requesting a five percent raise to replace to two point five percent for each, each year, um, which is a pretty immediate request. Um, the contract is otherwise unchanged. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for our attorney? All right, next we're gonna be asked to approve part two thirteen, the consent to enter the public property. Will it all clean out inside?
Yeah, so this is, um, I was contacted by Eagle, basically, um, the former hardware site, they are concerned. About ongoing contaminants, and so they wanna go out and um, basically drill some pest wells to take samples. Um, and they need our consent to enter the property and do that, we're not gonna, it's gonna be minimally disruptive to the land. Um, uh, they sent the agreement, I made some minor changes, but otherwise it looks good, and uh, recommend approval.
Questions or comments for Attorney Parkus on this side? Mayor Phil Jackson?
Yes, um, Attorney, who was the minor? The minor, um, executive?
Uh, it, it, the signature blocks that they had were, were um, not accurate. And they had initially, when they sent it to us, there were three parcels, but we only owned two of them. Uh, the other one was a B D C parcel, so I had them remove that parcel, because they needed that authorization from E D C. But other than that, um. That was it.
Okay, thank you. And any other questions? Yeah, I mean, I understand there's no cost to the standpoint of us.
Correct, this is one hundred percent Eagles' cost.
Any other questions, Attorney Parkus? Next, we're gonna be asked to approve a block party agreement. So this is, I think, just back to us after. The changes that you requested.
This is actually separate, so when we drafted the ordinance, and as part of the requirements, we had a block party agreement listed. So what we did is, we kind of took our cue from some other communities, and that they, um, some of them that we came across. Had required people that are doing their application assignments, or even indicating, they're not gonna place anything by way of example in the roadway, like inflatables or things like that. The idea being, if an emergency vehicle needs to go through, and there's a big inflatable that's gonna enter down, if going to repeat an ambulance or a police car. Um, they have to be responsible for cleanup afterwards, um, they can't move the, the barricades, um, the, um. They have to keep an eye on noise, they can't um, consume alcohol in, in the streets or, or sidewalks. They can't do rapid sales unless you're registered nonprofit, things like that. Um, so it's just basically a supplemental on that one set, have I?
I have a question on the barricade.
Yeah.
Um, the moving the barricades or the, or the people that live on them, in the area which they're. In the area which they're, you know, if people have access to their homes.
Yeah.
That'll be, or are they typically just set where they can drive along?
Um, they should be set where they can grab them. If they've been moved by people, then then. Yeah, well, I guess that's the idea, I'm saying they can't move them because they're gonna be placed by the city in a way. Where emergency vehicles should be able to get around them. So that tangentially, people who might not be participating in the block party, that may get home can also go around them. But it's they should be placed in a way to gen- generally dissuade traffic down the street. All right. We're. Good.
Any other questions or comments on the agenda? What are they? Next, we're gonna be asked to approve closing city hall at noon on December fourteenth. City Manager.
Yes, this request, um, came to America. Many, I mean, we've done this the um years past, we just haven't done it for a few years, I think since COVID. Um, and this is for our annual holiday gathering or goods gather. Um, so to allow all city employees, um, we are just requesting that we will close at noon on the fourteenth.